Speaking of a new Tahoe. I have been led to believe on something and I don't have enough information on it. Joe, you're gonna have to help us with this one here. But I understand that we can actually get a brand spanking new Tahoe, four-wheel drive, and we can get that under an emergency management grant.
And we're gonna do what with it?
Mary mobile?
There you go.
We can get it for $5,000, is the number that I was told. Downtownship has one, isn't it? It could be used for a variety of things. I mean, instead of taking the dump truck to go to Richland, buy some supplies, you can take that vehicle. When Jeff Corneal was over here, he's got work itself. He's gotta run around the town for whatever purposes, for emergency management. It could be used for that. I mean, it's not just simply limited. Maybe if there happens to be a time when I gotta go to Trenton.
There you go, that's what it's for. Yep, now we know.
It's permanent.
I've been here four years, I've been driving around in my own truck, never asked for a dime. I don't need a vehicle.
I don't have to have it, I could simply take my part. But I'm saying, it's there for the purposes of the city business.
That's right, for him. That's it, for him. Everything is for him.
Saving money here. Okay, so I have a feeling that it's not a good idea. You can get a $50,000 vehicle for $5,000, that's fine.
If you had a purpose for it, you can put a plow on it, can you plow the streets with it? You can load equipment in it. If you're not gonna spend, recommend doing that.
Moving down the line here. We have, um... Tool purchase for Public Works. Aaron, you and I are gonna review this list, and then we're gonna come back at the next meeting to figure out what we're doing, okay? Because we just got this list, and we're gonna move on it tonight.
Well, let me bring this point up. We talked about this a month ago, and we put it off. Now, you wanna put it off for another month? The gentleman in Public Works has no tools to work on the equipment or the vehicles that he has. He can't even change the oil. We don't have it. I don't know.
Good, we've never bought any.
We've had tools in the past, wrong. And now that we have those.
No, I got the last floor.
So that's good, what about in your house?
You know, we have an inventory of what we currently have, and we have a list of what he needs to work. And we're missing significant amounts of it.
This inventory, you shouldn't have to pay there.
Yeah.
There was never an inventory of any tools that the city owned, or any tools that Mr. Johnson had purchased or brought from. Pardon me?
He spoke at that.
But you can stop.
No, I didn't.
Can we open this up to the public?
I just said the meeting's gonna open to the public.
Then, public should not be speaking.
Okay.
I'm good.
Are you public?
I'm good.
I'm not speaking.
I mean, see what it has. We're gonna get some tools, yes, but we haven't even digested the list. This guy's like, I don't wanna do it at a meeting here. To get finances, just to be vibing in the next week and say, you and I go over this, you know, in the next couple of days. Correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, but what we could do is not to exceed a amount of tools to purchase, and we could set a limit of, um, about a thousand.
Yeah, and, yeah, just to start, and then review both lists.
I will make the necessary motion to get preliminary approval here to not exceed a thousand dollars for purchase of tools.
Just to start.
Just to start.
Just to get them going, to get them for the next month.
Roll call, please.
And, and, a big car could be used to purchase this stuff.
I would like to get an email. I would like to be in on the purchases of tools, where they're being bought and what is being bought. Being on that committee, I would like to know what's coming in, so then now I can log it as well as the city. So if there's a discrepancy, ah, look, this is what I know was bought. I want like a trail, like I can see.
I am suggesting, we do not purchase the tools that come deep below those.
I agree.
We need to get commercial tools that are gonna, gonna last for some time.
I have contacts with suppliers that I use for work, and I have to reach out to them to see the kind of flights they can get for us.
If there are, maybe if we do that, I'll know, B, they're state contract and C. I mean, if we're not willing to purchase some like major, major tools, as an example. You can get a real decent, or this drill for a hundred and twenty bucks, it's, it's rigid.
Yeah, but I don't wanna buy junk for him. I mean, rigid's not junk. I, yeah, I do commercial construction though, I would. Hilti, the wall, and the wall, because the only tool we'll buy them now. And I don't expect the city to buy hilti because they're expensive, but I think with the wall and the wall. I mean, I, I'm hanging out.
I'd say, I'd say, I spent $45,000 on who? I thought it was a long year. Maybe the long year will discuss this, okay? Okay, all right, we'll figure it out. Right now, I don't wanna.
Why did you tell the people?
Would you say? Yeah. After $10,000, I'll get something started, and then we can go from there. There's a roll call, please. Roll call. Joe.
Okay, are we voting on something?
What is going on, on that end of the table?
Now, I heard you say something about voting.
Oh, we're voting on what? I didn't see it going down.
I did not hear the resolution, or what you're voting on.
Motion to approve, to not exceed a thousand dollars for the purchase of things.
Lot, lot of conversations going on here, so.
Let's just stick with this one here, while you're doing this.
All right.
I'm ready again.
Resolution is not to expend more than $1,000 on tools. Roll call, Mr. Barbetto.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes. Mayor Vinesia.
Yes. Moving down to new business. We have, um, the Historical Commission sign quote. Mrs. Olson is not here with us tonight, Ellen Olson, but I got a question that I was asked and requested to ask at the table. What was the purpose of why she had to go out and get three signatures of three different people who went to the school there? At the old Esteville School, how? What was the purpose of why we needed that?
The information that is gonna go on the sign has to be documented.
What's the documentation?
Well, first of all, by getting the people who went to the school that the school existed, number one. That we have, that we have documentation. You know it was there, I know it was there, but we have to have documentation. Then we need to have documentation on the other parts of this.
And having the list of all the people that went to school there?
No, we have three, three people.
I don't see the need of why she needed to go out and get three signatures of three different students. If there was no students that were surviving, then that means we wouldn't get the sign.
No, that would mean we would have to go and do some other research to find out about the information that's being stated.
I think we gave that one for a runaround, she had to go to Colorado to go, well, she had somebody from Colorado that had to pick contact. It happened to be her husband was another one, and then I believe that there was still yet another one, but it's in Agarwood Township. And the reality is, I kinda really thought that absurd. The Historic Commission, which is an autonomous board, gave a proper presentation that was beneath the sign, and it was approved previously, and then it got held, and then all of a sudden, now we need to have documentation that the school existed there.
No, documentation that what's being written is factual.
It was factual, Mr. Barbetto.
How do you know?
It was factual. There is someone here, there's actually two members of the Historic Commission, and I didn't say that I was gonna have them speak up on the matter.
I was the way I mean Chief Nash. Come for the meetings. He just asked us. We're on the commission. And, um, we have pictures even of all the kids in the classes, my husband's brother and sister attended the school.
But there's other information that needs to be documented.
Oh, did we open it up for the Historic Commission to speak?
Yes, he just asked us. Why pay attention?
And we're, I am paying attention, I'm trying to.
Stop, excuse me, please.
He just asked us.
Nobody more can pay us the motion.
I asked them to speak.
Okay, so we can do that.
It needs to be a motion. It's a motion. Robert, I need to take some action. Face time. Robert, there's a motion.
So, we're gonna get the sign out, making a motion to be approved to, throughout the sign. Is there a second?
Why did?
I mean, there's a leak. That's what you give feedback for. I know that you're holding it. We're having fun. I'm sorry, Joe, you need to stay clean here. Truly proud of that, I didn't know. We're in a temporary intermission here until every.
Thank you, Carol.
Well, we have a community information mailer, so that I just started taking there. If we ever watch, that's gonna be temporarily held. Please get back emails to, it's gonna be, the convenient, like, you'll do this. They haven't gotten back yet. Where did Aaron go, the restroom? Restroom. I'm sorry. Makes a call, you know? Thought she put already.
Nah, I just gotta rehydrate, you know?
Gotcha. Uh, we're moving forward here on this, getting the sign for the Historic Commission. I believe I made a motion to proceed to, just the sign, is there a second? Where? I believe that the Historic Commission's already supplied all the pertinent information that what we need to do to track. We're on this here now, go ahead, Mary, please, you're a member of the commission.
I think she submitted a new vote.
I have not received anything else up to that.
Oh, I think it got held up.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, Ellen, Ellen's not here. I haven't talked to her, she's in here.
I think there was one in here, Mary.
That was $238.
I think there was a new one that was last month's.
Yeah, it was last month, I remember that, that one was, was held up.
That's the one that we're gonna purchase, it's one side, not both sides. $238.
Yes.
Yeah, three people verified they went to school there.
That's not it. That's not it.
So there's a motion, and there's a second at the table here. Roll call, please. The purchase of sign.
Mr. Barbetto.
I think Aaron did.
No.
Mr. Buchanan.
I'm staying.
Ms. Gibbons.
No.
Mr. Hughes. Mayor Vinesia.
Yes. Really? $138 signed for the commission.
This is a political thing. They voted for you.
Sad, very sad.
Keep commenting, Joe, thank you.
Sign can get approved. We have, um...
Signed to go, signed to go.
Public Works Labor, that was requested to be placed on here, does anybody wanna explain?
Yes. The, I guess I can still speak about Public Works, but, the, uh... With the one person in Public Works. There it is, according to the State law, JIF, not JIF, but the OJIF, the OJIF. They serve some jobs requiring more than one person. Therefore, I would suggest that you advertise for a part-time position, so that we will have a second person to fill in when these situation arises, not to exceed 24 hours per week.
We already have a couple of people that are already.
That's emergency management people, we're not talking about, we're talking about the part-time Public Works employee. We have them in the past, and I think that we should have somebody available on a regular basis, at least 24 hours a week. That could be for six-hour days, or three eight-hour days, based on the need of the city. And that's something that we have to advertise for. Receive resumes and do interviews.
We could also rehire a previous employee. And I could have a conversation, and he's okay with a million flowers at a time. You still have to advertise for him. He's already, he's not an employee, he's, at this point.
That's all right, just let him apply.
Okay, we'll put an advertise on him.
That's why there's no one you question anything about.
Just try to do it by the rules, buddy.
If, if, if he's qualified, and he's better than the other candidates.
You could always put that on the card that we're sending out, or we keep it in, in, in the city.
I don't know if that's legal. Under equal opportunity employer rule, I don't know if that's legal.
I don't know.
I don't think that it is.
You make an advertise for it, whether it's someone who worked in the past, um, you know.
Fred, let me ask, let me ask your opinion on something. If we have previous employees, and he's okay with wanting to come back to work a couple hours a week.
Two hours?
24 hours a week. We don't have to say that's 24, you're saying 24.
You're saying two.
You really should re-advertise this.
There you go.
The accelerations that we were talking about, issues that go to qualifications, they are not part of, well, they're not part of the definition of what the potential employee must have. A potential employee comes in and has experience, you take that into consideration, but you're not necessarily advertising that as an element of what you're looking for. Just go ahead and advertise and pick it up on the interviews. Okay, so we'll put the advertising in for what, three days?
24 hours a week.
No, three days, how many days do you advertise?
Oh, okay, so.
Put the advertising for three days, see what kind of place we get off of that.
Motion and.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Roll call, I'll make a motion to advertise for the position of a part-time Public Works employee.
That's okay, it's all right.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Barbetto.
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia.
He wants to pick a point.
The use of city hall. I had a lengthy conversation with Fred, and quite frankly, because of liability issues, and allowing one entity to use this building opens up Pandora's Box, and now every entity is gonna wanna use this building. It could be the Boy Scouts one day, it could be the Girl Scouts another day.
So?
It could be any type of an organization, hey, you're giving it to one, why can't we use this building? So, the reality is, Fred, explain to your audience level here after what you said to me today. No, pretty much across the board, municipalities do not open up their city halls to any organization that wants to have a meeting. If you have an organization that is part of the city government, even if it is a committee that has been established by the city government. Say by, say by way of example, if this council voted to establish a senior citizens advisory board, and council appointed the persons to it, that is an extension of what council is doing, it is an extension of the city business, and logically, you would have that meeting inside this building. The problem that arises is when you begin having organizations that are not part of the city government or an extension of the city government, because what is the criteria that you are using? You may let one organization in, and then another requests to do it, and for some reason, you turn them down, and you are now being challenged by a discrimination argument. The other thing that goes along with it is the liability aspect of it. When you're having organizations coming in, you know, are you asking for, if they're unrelated to the municipality, you should be asking for insurance issues and things of that nature. My approach that I shared with the mayor is that if it is an extension of city government, and you have the meetings in city hall, there is logic and that makes sense. If they are not, then you probably should not be doing it. If by chance, you want to do it, you wanna reach out and let different kinds of organizations come in, you really ought to establish some kind of standards as to what it is you're looking at when you're making this, the decision, so that you don't fall into any potential argument of any kind of discrimination. You probably also, in terms of the terms and conditions of their coming in, have some kind of indemnification or release agreement, and some kind of insurance agreement. And because those things are somewhat complicated for what should be a simple process, in my experience, municipalities in the, in the area do not open their doors to other organizations not related to the government to come in and use the building. That was what I shared with the mayor earlier today or yesterday, whenever we had this conversation. Therefore, um... You hear what the solicitor said, we'll have to keep everything limited as to strictly city business, use this building. I was not aware until I saw an email that this building was being used for some type of movement that's occurring in this community over here, about openness, transparency, peace and love, and anything else.
Can't have that. Really?
There was a train just moving through the community here, and unfortunately, I'm not running the, I'm not the conductor.
That's right.
Okay, so therefore, the use of this building has to be officially city business, with an extension of what we're doing over here, and therefore, that is not. Moving down the line here, old business, we really don't have any, any old business. We have a opening for the planning board, zoning board, and Frank, um... Honest John Road, he's not gonna be able to fulfill. I believe that he may actually be moving out of the community, he has some issues going on. He owns a couple of different properties, and aside, he's gonna, that's gonna matter, so he's no longer gonna wanna be a viable member. With that being said, I had a couple conversations with a very young member of our community here. I'm highly impressed with his intelligence level, he studies being an attorney, and at that point, I think I'm gonna be nominating, or appointing Walter Gillis to planning board.
Thank you.
He may be the youngest member of the planning board in St. Louis, Jersey, I'm not sure, but I'm sure he has some good paperwork there.
Well, I'm honored.
It's a fact.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I would like to see more young people getting involved, certainly it's encouraging here as well to have our youngest member on city council here. I didn't know he was 32 years old.
Four.
He's still a baby.
He's old, man.
He's still a baby, but, uh, welcome aboard, so we need to have more young people involved in our community. I think it's a good thing, hopefully, at some point, maybe, if Dylan should be a future lead of our community, if he decides to stay in Astoria. Time will tell, but there's a start for you.
Great, yeah.
You guys raise your hands.
Thank you.
Okay, we will be meeting, our next meeting will be on the fourth Thursday.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait. I've also read the zoning code, um, last couple nights, and, um, in accordance with the Parliament Protection Act, I understand, um, the responsibilities, I have a lot to learn, of course, but.
You'll get a code, I'll prepare the. You will get a code book, and I'm sure you'll read through it, and, uh, yeah, we'll go from there. But, thank you, meeting is not a delay. Fourth Thursday of this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Motion?
I've made a motion.
Second.
Second, call a favor. Aye. Meeting's open to the public. Mr. State.
Um, he's married, eight, a little bit, 93 now, South Jersey, I think. Um, I have two things I keep a very, about the tool thing, I've been a half payable, receivable for years. Isn't there a way you can run a report in the system to see how much money was spent in Public Works? And see, you know, where the tools, like what were bought, and then you can check what's in there?
We can run a report, but let's say we bought a number of tools, say at Hope detail.
Right.
We don't itemize each one, but we can refer to that purchase order.
Right.
We go back to that purchase order, pull it, and it will list the detail.
Okay, that's a way to find them. And, number two, I'm probably the other person that lives at a dirt road, in Astoria. My question is, I mean, the road's been there, I've been out here for 37 years, and every time I have to come to council, and you did come this year, I appreciate, but shouldn't there be a list saying, okay, South Jersey, Pacific Avenue, these are the dirt roads, they should be, they should get gravel, because they do turn into mud holes. I had a problem getting the ambulance back there for my husband, which is very upsetting. I mean, then, when they plow the snow, which they have to plow the snow, it just, you know, they can't help it, but there's holes, so. I mean, instead of us having to come and beg for gravel, shouldn't it just be maintained? I don't want it to be, but just, I mean.
Normally, what, what the process is, is that in the spring, the Public Works used all the dirt roads, and they, they tried to address the most serious first, but they tried to address all of them during that period of time. If there's an issue with a particular road that may be, it may be in the fall or in the middle of the winter, then if we would get a phone call here to Public Works Department or somebody here at council, then we could have somebody come out and take a look at it, and make an emergency address to that issue.
That doesn't happen, years goes by.
Well, if, if you heard the phone call, you know, in the past.
But see, then again, I gotta make a.
In the past, in the past three and a half years, I've been on the Public Works, and I can assure you that if I got a phone call regarding an issue with a road, I was out there the next day.
No, you did come, I came last August because I had a huge crater, but I'm just saying, it's.
Mary, if I could make a recommendation to you, you may want to send a one or two sentence email over to city hall and say, you need to have your road maintained, there's some problems with it, that way they, that's your documentation.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm saying, you're missing my point, you're missing, thank you, you're missing the point, there's, there should be, there's only a couple of us now. You shouldn't have to beg to get gravel, we have a gravel.
You're not begging, you're bringing it to the attention of, you know.
And then when something is an emergency, like an ambulance, it's really quiet.
Um, regarding the tools again, I know, I work for a school, and everything in our school, whether it's computer, mouse, or a terminal, or whatever, everything's barcoded with the tools. Like, isn't there an inventory that should be done every year of every tool that the city owns? And, you know, like, maybe numbered, or, you know, you have like engravers or skin, yeah, you scan with the barcode.
Joe and I have talked, yeah, Joe and I have talked about that.
That's insanity to have things.
Everything will be cataloged.
You know, every chair in the building should be barcoded, and.
I agree 100%.
You know, microphone, whatever, you know, should be barcoded, you have to keep track of this stuff. People are dropping the balls, I'm, I'm sorry to say, but if you're head of public housing, or I mean, Public Works, or whatever it is you're head of, you gotta know your stuff, you know, know what's going on there, this is our money.
Absolutely.
Just lost the way into the wind, because nobody's doing their job.
Long before I got here.
I'm not laying a blame on you.
I'm saying, Public Works, I'm all Public Works, or I was.
Generally, Public Works.
This is something that's went back 10 to 12 years.
And it shouldn't have stopped.
Nobody ever did an inventory on anything.
Shouldn't have stopped.
But we didn't have.
And somebody should have realized that, I'm not naming names or blaming anybody, just somewhere along the line, somebody should have said, hey,
Right.
this isn't right.
That's the right one.
Thank you.
Jim Owen, 19550. I'd like to make the suggestion with the gravel roads that you're speaking of, I think that if, if you hired someone to come in and put a crown on these roads, you have good gravel and you're down there, put a good crown in the roads, and you won't, you'll have a runoff, you won't have that washboard effect, it, it just wastes the time, just putting gravel on the roads, and it just, they turn into mud.
I think that's, we should have contracted that, for real.
It really should be, because if it's not done right, they're gonna have holes all the time.
Last year, we contracted Pernum Brothers to come in and use a vibratory roller.
They've agreed to?
They were in the process of purchasing the grader. And they assured us that when they had the grader, they would be available coming to do that service. We did a grader and a vibratory roller, and. Grader and the vibratory roller in, in sync, so that's,
Absolutely, graded, crown, and roller at the same time, that's a good, uh,
That should definitely,
But would crowning have anything to do, Larry, with the final, like, that they're talking?
No.
With this gentleman, which we're talking about? Nothing.
Crowning a roadway actually helps it from deteriorating, because it's not sitting on top, it's running off to the side.
As a gravel road, it's not a, uh, an improved way, you know, it's just simply maintenance.